Call meeting to order, please. Mr. Chairman Fisher, would you leave us an invocation?
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we give thanks for this beautiful day in the middle of winter that we've been privileged to today. We also ask, pray for all those that are suffering from natural disasters here at home and our nation and abroad. Be with them and comfort them. And we also pray for the men and women who are serving in our fire and rescue and our sheriff's department, and pray for the men and women of our armed services who are serving all around the world to protect the freedoms that we so enjoy in this country. And Heavenly Father, we ask this evening that you be with us and guide us in the directions that we take for the citizens of Frederick County. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
Mr. Chairman. Lofton, would you leave us in the pledge, please?
Do you mean the pledge, by standing and facing the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adoption of the agenda. I'm going to ask the board to withdraw item number two under tab C under county officials. Otherwise, entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as amended.
No.
Second.
Is there a second? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Thank you, sir. Consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I would like to make a request that we pull item C and have the county administrator read that resolution. I think a person that's worked for the county 34 years needs a little more recognition than just a consent agenda.
Will do read it into the record when we present it to him? Is that okay?
It'll be fine. I didn't know you were going to present it.
All right, sir. But thank you for the comment. All right, so the recommendation is that we include tab E, F, G, H, I, and J as consent. How would the board like to handle it?
No approval.
Motion and a second to approve that agenda, consent agenda.
Second.
All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Include those items on consent. This is a portion of the meeting that we set aside for citizen comment on any issue that we will not be discussing later on the agenda. Does we have sign up?
Jay Martz, who wants to talk about, I think, the Finance Committee and the agenda.
Ms. Martz.
Good evening, Chairman DeHaven, Board members and staff. I'm Jay Martz, resident of the Gainesboro District. I first want to thank you for the work you do on this board. I have a few comments, but one issue on this agenda. It was difficult to work through the 300-plus pages on tonight's meeting packet. Most of our hard-working taxpayers cannot dedicate the time to study all these issues. I would encourage you to hold separate public information meetings or town halls on some of these high-priority issues we have before us and allow discussion instead of just a three-minute statement. To my point, as you know, I've attempted to advocate for the past several years on the need to expand school capacity through addition and renovation of existing facilities versus new construction. I'm sure you all read the Winchester Star article this morning on an up-close look at Frederick's debt. I commend the Star on keeping the public informed, and I believe it supports the need to look for alternatives to new construction, new school construction. I read in your agenda packet, I believe it was tab A, minutes of the budget work session on 31 December, page 45 through 49, you discuss capital projects, priorities for the school system, and the chairman indicated that this body compiled some questions to be answered by the school board. Well, I have a few questions I would ask you to consider. Where can we, where can the public find the proposed school boundary adjustments in supporting transportation plans for the $123.8 million new construction projects? Where are the design plans for the fourth high school when it was proposed to be built for a capacity of 1,250, and then suddenly a new design for a capacity of 1,725, 1,725 at the same cost? Seems odd. Where is the overnight analysis of the change of the school board building and grounds committee that they acted on in their decision to increase this capacity by 475 students? Why does the Frederick County School Board not include the increased capacity of schools when augmented by temporary use of modular classrooms in their monthly enrollment report? They report that we are currently at 95% capacity without these modulators. Where are we with them? I asked these, I ask these questions after I spent some time on the Loudoun County and the Prince William County School Board's website, and I was able to find this type of data that was available to the taxpayers. If the school board wants to push us into a position of greatly increased debt, why cannot we get answers to these reasonable questions? So if you're looking for questions to ask to the school board, I submit a few. Now, I had signed up twice, but Mr. Tibbs told me I could only speak once, but, so I had one other issue I wanted to talk about. I wanted to make another comment on the ongoing budget workshops you're engaged in. I already referenced the Winchester Star article on the debt. Frederick County is in the red for 200, $213.7 million. You know, the Commonwealth is in the red for $91 billion. The feds owe $20 trillion. Our county will collect an extra $4.3 million from the 8.47 increase in our real estate assessment. My prediction is that you will spend every penny of it on increasing government and providing a pay increase to employees, and you will not attempt to reduce debt, and there will no, be no attempt to decrease taxpayer property tax rates to make this revenue neutral. Please prove me wrong. Thank you for allowing me to address the board.
Thank you, sir.
Carrie Ann Kite regarding Strategic Plan Priority Number 13.
Hello, my name is Carrie Ann Kite. I'm a taxpayer in the Shawnee District, and I would like to speak about the strategic plan. In the section addressing state-of-the-art education, it is stated that the design of facilities optimizes the learning environment for our students while employing the most environmentally conscious building practices. A definition for state-of-the-art is the most recent stage in development of a product incorporating the newest ideas of the most up-to-date features. My question is, who is deciding what the optimal learning environment is? On page 17 of section C of the packet, there were many bullet points aimed at review of facility design. Is the Board of Supervisors deciding that they need to be more involved in design? If so, what are your qualifications? Are you questioning the qualifications of the architects? Or, the current school board has used three separate architecture firms to design the recently constructed Frederick County Middle School, the proposed 12th Elementary School, and the proposed 4th High School. The designs for all three are very similar despite being done by three separate firms. Here are some reasons for similarities. Architects have continuing education requirements to stay licensed. Learning about the newest and best environmental designs is their job. Firms focusing on educational institutions consult educators on their needs and teaching methodologies. They follow guidelines set forth by the Department of Education on the design of new schools. In Priority Number 13 of your review of the strategic plan, you were addressing the desire for more communication or oversight. Is this board questioning the professional integrity of the architects or the school board for hiring them? We elect the school board to address educational matters, including hiring a proficient architect to design schools because that is their specialty. Educators and architects are required to complete continuing education. It is their job to know the state-of-the-art or the newest ideas and most up-to-date features or methodologies. Does the Board of Supervisors have any requirement of continuing education in reference to educational methodologies or building design for construction? As a taxpayer, I'm concerned at the level of distrust of the school board and the three separate architecture firms. Also of note, the new Frederick County Middle School is a leader in energy efficiency based on kilobtuas per square feet as compared to the other schools in the county. This information was provided to me by the Director of Facility Services, Tim Prisman. This is a perfect example of the architects using environmentally conscious building practices as stated in your, in your strategic plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's the last one.
That's the last one? All right. Different subject?
Is it on the agenda item? Then you can, the agenda, agenda items at the end.
Thank you. For the supervisors' comments, are there any? All right, hearing none, we'll move on. Minutes of the closed session, regular meeting, December 14, 2016.
Move for approval, that submitted?
Motion to approve. Second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second, and in discussion.
I'm staying on it, Mr. Chairman, I wasn't part of the board.
Supervisor Ewing, I'm staying. All others? Aye.
Aye.
Any no? Thank you. Budget work session, December 21, 2016. How would the board like to handle it?
Make a motion for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to approve is submitted, is there a second?
Second.
Second, is there any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Then we're adopted. Brings us to committee appointments. Anybody else got in there? You're welcome to go ahead. For Fairfax Community College, we have an application.
Mr. Chairman, may I address that?
Please, sir.
Mr. Michael Lake is in my district. He passed the application through me, and I passed it on without signing it or recognizing with approval. But if it's appropriate at this time, I would like to make a motion that we approve Michael Lake for that position.
Heard the motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
And a second? Is there any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Michael Lake's appointed to Board Fairfax Community College Board. Thank you. Thank you, Gary. Strategic Resources Advisory Board? Doesn't look like we have response back.
That's it.
And that's it. Thank you. All right, you have any luck there? Well, bring us to item three, the request for commissioner revenue for refunds.
Yes, sir, you have two. The first one is a request for a refund to Richard Lee Hawkins in the amount of $3,671.97 for proration of personal property taxes in 2016 resulting from the taxpayer moving vehicles out of this locality during 2016. So you would need to approve the refund and appropriate the funds.
Heard the request, how would the board like to handle this?
Move for approval of the request and the corresponding supplemental appropriation.
Motion to approve both, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
A second, is there any discussion? Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Ewing?
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the motion carries. Next?
The second one is to authorize a refund to Enterprise FM Trust in the amount of $3,239.15 for personal property taxes in 2015 and 16 resulting from proration of personal property taxes where vehicles owned by the company were sold, traded, or moved from this locality. Again, you would need to approve the refund and the supplemental appropriation in that amount.
Heard the request, how would you like to handle this?
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of the $3,239.15 and the corresponding supplemental appropriation.
Thank you. Is a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Second, is there any discussion? Supervisor Ewing?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the motion carries. That brings us to the end of the list, and thank you. Next on our agenda, is proposed amendments to Frederick County Code, Chapter 155, public hearing.
Sir, you skipped the Public Safety Committee?
Well, I'm sorry. It was all yellow.
I really didn't delete it from there.
I see it. Public Safety Committee report?
Mr. Chairman, the Public Safety Committee met on Wednesday, January 11 at 8:30 at the Frederick County Public Safety Building. The first item, just looking for a consensus from the board on this, it has to deal with the fire and rescue study update. Chief Lindenberg informed the committee of the selection process where four firms were interviewed and a recommendation to use the Fitz Corporation was made. The committee supported and made a motion to support that endorsement and forward it to the board. And I'm just looking for, if the board endorses this, if this requires appropriation or whatever later, it could come back from that standpoint.
Don't think we'd be looking for anything other than a consensus at this stage. Does anyone object to moving forward with the study?
I'm fine with that.
Right, sir. Anything else?
One item, just for information for the board, it's the review of the revenue recovery MOU that started two and a half years ago, I think. There was a subcommittee headed by Supervisor Lofton to update on the status of this MOU agreement, and after reviewing the documents, it was noted that the, some conditions have changed since the agreement's inception, and there might be some need for clarification. But at this time, the Safety Committee is not recommending any changes to the current verbiage of the MOU, and it'll be reviewed again in the future. So that's just information, I admit it was reviewed, and the committee at this time doesn't recommend any changes.
Excellent. Thank you, sir.
That completes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. All right, so this will bring us to the public hearing. Proposed amendments to the Frederick County Code, Chapter 155, or tab L. Who's presenting?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. The public hearing. Staff, going to share any of this, or are we going to take it from here?
Mr. Chairman, I can give a very brief explanation on this. This is a ordinance change to Section 155-81 of the county code regarding appeals in business license matters. The sole purpose of the change is to ensure conformity between the county code and the state code. The language, other than the couple locality-specific references, the language of the proposed amendment is identical to the language in Section 58.1-3703.1A, 5, and 8 of the state code. I think it's pretty straightforward. There's a couple timeframe changes and procedure changes exactly about what happens when, but it's fairly administrative.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to comment concerning these proposed changes to Chapter 155 taxation? Article 16, business license provisions in Section 81, appeals and rulings. Anyone? All right, seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. How would the board like to handle this? Yes, sir. Supervisor Dunn?
As Chairman of that committee, the committee voted unanimously to go ahead and approve this, so I'd just move that the committee go ahead, or the board go ahead and approve these, these changes.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the changes as submitted. Is there a second? And a second. Is there any discussion? Anyone? Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Ewing?
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the motion carries. All right. This will bring us to a public hearing, the 2035 Comp Plan Update.
Thank Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Tonight, this is the public hearing for the update to the comprehensive plan. This is the 2035 comprehensive plan. Within this document, we have three main components. The first is the main plan itself, and then we also have Appendix 1, which is all of the area plans. I would note that within that, Appendix 1, we also have the proposed Kernstown area plan, as well as the Leonard property comprehensive plan amendment, which is a sewer water service amendment that the board has previously seen. And we also have Appendix 2, which is all of the background analysis and the supporting studies for the plan. Now, the, kind of the background of where this has been, we first started with the five-year update. Back in 2015, we had some web-based outreach. We had a number of stakeholder and committee reviews throughout 2015 and 2016. It was discussed at the Planning Commission Retreat back in April of last year. We also had a number of staff and outside editor comments last year. We had a series of public meetings throughout the summer of 2016, and then the Planning Commission Board of Supervisors joint work session back in August. And then we had some additional outside comments, Board of Supervisor comments, and staff reviews back in the fall of last year. So that takes us to what has changed from the 2030 comprehensive plan to the 2035 update. We have some revised focus for the futures, as well as goals and strategies. There's a number of text revisions, simplification of terms, and there's an overall reduction in the actual amount of text throughout the document. We've updated the facts and the figures, as well as the maps. We've expanded the areas for business and economic development. There's an addition of a Frederick County Sanitation Authority section, which previously wasn't in the plan. Updates to the Kernstown area plan text and the sewer water service area for that map. And also, as I stated, the inclusion of the Leonard property Swazza expansion. Just real quick, these are the two main maps. On the screen to your left for the Comp Plan, we have the Eastern Frederick County Long-Range Land Use Plan. This is really an overall map that has all the small area land use plans shown on it. And then we also have the Eastern Frederick County Road Plan. And just some quick info on the Kernstown area plan. We've updated that plan from when it was originally discussed by the board to include some simplified and edited text. There was a requested sewer water service area expansion that is now shown, and some changes to some of the previous natural area text and adjustments. Now, this is the Kernstown area plan, what is currently in the plan as opposed to what's proposed. I'll just, real quick, this is the existing area, and then, this really cleans up the lines. It includes a sewer water service area bump out into areas. And real quick with the Leonard property, this was a June request with our standard CPPA process. It was a Swazza expansion of 43 acres. It's an RA property, however, it's planned already for future commercial office industrial. Real quick, this was the map, the property outlined in black, it's along White Oak Road. And just, in addition to the sewer water service area adjustment, there was also some text. I won't read through all of that, it really just talks about future improvements that might be necessary to White Oak Road. So now, back to the overall document, the steps that it's been in the past couple months. I went to the Comp Plan Committee back in October, Planning Commission discussion in November. It had to go back to the Transportation Committee back in November due to comments from VDOT for the state code compliance. It had, it was discussed by the board at your December meeting. It was sent to public hearing. The Planning Commission held a public hearing at their January 4 meeting. They did recommend approval, and so tonight is the Board of Supervisors' public hearing for this document. So with that, I would like to ask any questions, and we're seeking a decision from the board on the adoption of the 2035 comprehensive plan.
Thank you. Questions, Ms. Perkins, anyone? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to comment concerning proposed updates to the 2035 Comp Plan? If you'd come forward, sir, give us your name, magisterial district. Attempt to limit your comments to three minutes or less, please, sir.
I'll do my best. My name is Jason Triceter, I'm in the Shawnee District, and I just wanted to mention a couple things that I think may be perhaps mis-editing and is causing a little bit of a miscommunication that's got everybody here tonight. As I look through both the urban areas and the public facilities sections, there is some wording, like in the urban areas, page 5, the bulleted principle that says, "As a county, we want high-quality architecture and enhanced urban design." When we look at the public facilities, right in the introduction, there's a bullet I think needs to be reviewed or edited that says, once again, "We're looking for high-quality architecture and design, especially in public buildings and spaces." The last paragraph in the introduction, "There's an opportunity to improve the quality of community by applying contemporary," which belonging in the now, "planning principles to public facility planning." On page nine, there's a bulleted item that I think should be edited or clarified that says, "Educational facilities represent a lasting investment in the future by citizens of Frederick County. Contemporary," there's that word again, "learning facilities are energy efficient, employ natural lighting, and provide properly-conditioned spaces conducive to working." The reason I say this may be a miscommunication is just the actions of the board lately or inactions tells me that's not really what you're looking for, but that's what you're communicating to the other parts of our local agencies and government, that that was, in fact, what you're looking for. And now, our school board has invested $4.5 million of taxpayers' money in these architectural designs that I believe fit what is currently in the comprehensive plan, but that's not what we're looking for in spending, apparently, as a Board of Supervisors. And I think that that miscommunication has led us to this, this situation. I also think the residential development part should be rethought in the comprehensive plan, because right now, we are encouraging this residential growth and development, and we're even using plans like the Transfer of Development Rights Program, which I understand doesn't just encourage development, but it protects our rural land as well, but it removes all of that red tape, that there doesn't have to be a hearing on rezoning for that, making it easier for us to develop that residentially. And as a board, we're pushing that residential growth, but we're not prepared to provide the services. And what I suggest is, if we're not comfortable spending that money, then we need to do something in the plan to slow that residential growth, not to encourage it. If you're talking about delaying providing services to our residents, especially the children, then we should look at delaying that growth as well. That growth is what's driving this, and you're in control of that. When we have public hearings about rezoning for residential, that's your consideration, that's your opportunity to slow and stop. Putting a halt on those programs, or altering those programs, like that Transfer of Development Rights Program, is another way that we can slow that development. And that's something I'd really like you to consider. Chairman DeHaven, Supervisor Ewing, Supervisor Slaughter, Supervisor Lofton, you all came through the Frederick County Public School System. You guys were provided a quality education here in Frederick County, and I believe that there are things that you can do, whether it's providing funding for schools or slowing residential growth so that we don't, we aren't creating this problem for ourselves, is something that you owe to our children. That was something that was provided to you, and I'd like you to consider that moving forward. If it's not providing funding, something else needs to be done to take care of it. And thanks, thanks for letting me speak, thanks for giving me your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Would anyone else like to comment? Thank you, sir.
I'm Jay Martz with the Gainesboro District. Yeah, I want to commend Mr. Ruddy and his crew over there for doing a great job on this comprehensive plan. I went to a couple of his meetings that he had, his open houses, and I was, I was amazed at the amount of data that he had available to us, to us as citizens and taxpayers to look at. It's, it's truly amazing. What concerns me is just what the last speaker has said. With all that information, we should have a better development cost estimate when we approve these residential developments, because they're not paying for themselves. We're outgrowing our infrastructure, water, roads, schools, public safety, and we need to, we need to hold back on these residential developments until we have a good cost estimate. Now, I understand the General Assembly has, has had some problems with the PROFER program, and it's becoming a little more difficult, but, but the data is available over in that staff. I, I've seen it over and over again. So we need to work on coming up with a good development impact model for every one of these things that we approve. Otherwise, the taxpayers are going to continue to get tax increases and tax increases, and the citizens are going to be unhappy with their schools and their public safety. So, so I would ask you to use this data and, and slow down the residential growth that we have here unless it pays for itself. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Would anyone else like to comment? Anyone? Thank you, we'll close the public comment portion of the public hearing. Board, how would you like to handle this? Were you interested in acting on it?
Sure. Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman, yeah, I think we need to move forward with this. There are a couple of issues, I think somehow, I'm not sure exactly how to address this, but do you do some last-minute things, understand from VDOT and some transportation issues that may need some continual looking at? Perhaps, you know, we could approve this plan, but have staff look at some of these issues that VDOT's brought up recently, because I think they're going to be a little bit in conflict with a couple of areas. They're very minor, I think, as far as the overall comprehensive plan, and, you know, with several of the Comp Plan amendments, like the Leonard property, I think that needs to go forward. And if we don't approve this, that stuff gets held up, and I, you know, it's, we're giving the wrong signals if we don't move forward. So I'm looking for, I'd be glad to make the motion, but I think a couple of things still need to be further refined, and it's not due to staff's not looking at them, it's just a couple of recent developments, so, looking for help.
I think that we can maybe explore some options. If it's all confined to a particular section, let's, for instance, from what your comments were, if you're, if the issues you have concerns about are within the transportation section, you could approve the rest of the plan and not the transportation section. If your thoughts are more general and you want to pursue continued discussion on transportation issues, we could certainly direct those questions to the Transportation Committee. I'm sure the Supervisor Lofton will be happy to take care of that there. So you're going to have to help us, either one of those options, address your concerns.
I guess I would ask staff then, if we just approved the Comp Plan except for the transportation part to be reviewed, would that create any negative things that, as far as letting things move forward? And I'm just using the Comp Plan Amendment that was requested in June, like at the Leonard property. I don't believe it would affect that, but is there anything that you think, and I know this is spur of the moment, I hate to drop it on you like that.
Everything within that comprehensive plan is pretty well-connected together in one way or another.
Yeah.
I would perhaps encourage that we move forward, and then if there are any outstanding questions, we can address that maybe through the Transportation Committee as a first step following the approval of the comprehensive plan. Again, things are so very connected that it's difficult to ensure that if you take one thing out, it's not necessarily tied to another section, but it is indeed the Board's prerogative to do that, should you see, feel that's the appropriate thing to do.
Alternatively, the Board can instruct that the Comp Plan be amended at any point in time that it chooses through the normal review processes.
Okay.
Are we helping you get where you want to go?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. If we go that route, if we decide to adopt the amended comprehensive plan, given Supervisor Fisher's concern about a couple of items, we will have to go through another public hearing if we amend the Comp Plan again?
I think we should at that point.
Formal process would have to be completed, yes.
We would, we would certainly have to do that.
Well, if I may ask you another question, if we were to postpone the amendment of this, well, no, I guess I may answer my own question here. I was going to say, if we postpone it and we actually amend it, we'd still have to have another public hearing on it. So either way, we're going to have another public hearing? Okay.
It's the right process you got to do regardless, if you're going to make changes.
I'm just trying to minimize.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Clarification, if it's approved, can we go back and make modifications later?
Anytime that you would choose to do that, staff, staff will help us accomplish that.
Very good.
This is quite a major update, of course, the five-year update, but we stand ready to do any amendments as they come through, whether they're part of the amendment process or Board-county-driven.
Thank you, sir.
So I could make a motion that we approve the 2035 Comprehensive Plan update, and staff can review this and bring any amendments back to, or changes back to us and go through the process.
Yeah.
So that would be...
But you'll want at some point, and we don't have to do it now, share the concerns that you would like to see addressed with, with the Transportation Committee through, with the Shepherd Avenue, you prefer to do it. Is that fair?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Dunn.
On Page 51 of the plan, there's a comment on Sulphur Springs Road improvement, which we appreciate, but the intersection between Sulphur Springs Road and Greenwood has had a number of accidents, and the approach from Greenwood to Sulphur Springs Road has caused some serious problems. So I'd just like to state for the record, as we go forward with this, if Sulphur Springs Road is addressed, that it include the Greenwood intersection, that they've had truck overturns, car overturns, so I just want to make sure that's included in that, that section.
There are some transportation plans in place for upgrades to, to those areas?
Yes.
Yes, there are.
And I just want to make sure that's included, okay?
Yes, sir.
And then, one other comment, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
And then, for the gentleman that was making the comment about slowing community growth and the comment about impact fees, I concur with that. So, so we'll have that discussion further, but that's been noted, and I've made those comments before. I know I've had conversations with Mr. LaRocque, Mr. Mincho, and Mr. Collins on that issue, and would like to see the legislature in this session modify that. Whether that occurs or not, I don't know, but...
Please direct your comments to the motion, please?
Thank you, sir.
And we'll come back to those.
Okay.
Thank you. Further discussion, anyone? Ready to vote? Supervisor Ewing?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Chairman votes aye, and the motion carries. All right, that brings us to Board Liaison Reports. Are there any? All right, for this portion of the meeting, we set aside time for citizen comments on any issue that they might like to bring forward. So if you would, if you come forward, state your name, magisterial district, and attempt to limit your comments to three minutes or less, please. Any comment, anyone? Alan Morrison.
Yes, Alan Morrison from Gainesboro District. Gentlemen, since your obvious lack of intelligence, I will speak slowly if possible. I may ask for another minute to make up for that difference. However, your inadequacies in your positions, I certainly do appreciate the thoroughness of your responsibility to all citizens of Frederick County and not just a select group. The money has to come from someplace. We don't have a tree that we shake someplace on the mountainside that it comes from. My reappraisal is significantly higher than the average, so any impact you do on the tax rate is going to hit me especially hard. It's just a shame that my income will not change correspondingly. There are many people who are on fixed incomes, and any significant tax change is going to have a big impact. We need to spend some time. We have experts in the field. These experts have designed these buildings. They've added the latest gadgets, gizmos, and widgets, the latest trends and fads that somebody in an ivory tower has fabricated and put on paper. I would like to remind you that the best engineers in the world designed a ship that would not sink, and the Titanic sank on its maiden voyage. Having a bunch of letters on the end of your name doesn't make you responsible, it doesn't make you practical, and it doesn't help you understand the realities of life outside of a closed room. We talked about practicality. Glass walls where the students are inside and outside, the teacher has to divide their time between the classroom and those outside. Of course, the students are dividing their time between the teacher and the students outside. In the changing world we live in, I've heard so many comments about security and safety. The most likely place somebody will come is the most safe place that they can make an attack without being observed or stopped, and public schools would be a great place because there is no security other than locking the children in. So when there is an active situation going on, the teacher will yell to the children, "Here, hide behind this glass wall," and they won't see us. And that's the situation that we're facing now from a lack of responsibility in the planning, a lack of practicality, and a lack of reality in what's going on in the county. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, I'm Megan Hammond, and I currently attend Shorando High School. Like you've heard, Shorando and Millbrook are both very overcrowded, and I think building a new high school would help very much. Having a crowded high school is very hard for students and teachers. Students usually get shoved or knocked down in the hallways because there's no room to walk. You're literally at each other's heels. We also have trailers for classrooms. How would you feel if you had to walk through rain or snow just to get to one of your classes in the middle of the day? Because Shorando is overcrowded, a lot of students don't get their elective, first or second elective choice. If a student wants to advance a technology, but they get put in agriculture, then it'll be your fault that the student didn't major in what he or she wanted to. Most of my teachers don't have a classroom. Instead, they have to pull around a little cart and share the room with another teacher. It puts more stress on the teachers, and that makes the students more stressed out and grades go down. Is this how you would like the next generation of students to be like? I know if you start building the high school now, it won't help the present-day high schoolers, but it may help the present-day elementary schoolers, and if they learn what they actually want to learn, they could change the world. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Well done. Yes. Perfect.
My school is crowded from fourth grade and fifth grade, so I really want the new high school.
Thank you.
Very sweet.
Well-stated.
I don't need to say anything now, do I? I just want to say that my family, my two daughters who just spoke, we've been up here for four and a half years, and when moved up here, we, you know, we had all sorts of schools around the area to choose from, and we liked Frederick County. So we chose Shorando and the Harmel District, but at the time, we were told that there would be a new high school built by, I think it's next year? Well, obviously, we're, that's why we're all here talking, but I'm tired of hearing about this. I know y'all are. So I'm going to just say one statement that I just, I never thought I would ever say, and I wrote it down so I wouldn't mess it up. Please, please raise my taxes and let's get on with this. Thank you.
Sir, 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 could you, could you come back and state your name for the record and your daughter's name also?
My name is Adam Hammond, and this is my daughter Amanda Hammond.
Thank you very much.
Thank you both.
Good evening. My name is Eric Peterson. I'm from the Stonewall District, a Snowden Bridge resident. I think you're going to be getting to know us a lot over the next coming weeks and months. Initially, I didn't have a lot to say yet tonight, but after listening to the comprehensive 2035 Plan and the growth, I just have to say that I think that train has left the station. I don't know that we can slow the growth that's projected for Frederick County. We know that we have companies like Amazon, the FBI, Procter &amp; Gamble, and Navy Federal bringing several jobs to Frederick County, which is a good thing, but that's going to require our county to grow along with those companies bringing those jobs to our county. So, you know, our concern, and I've only been in this area for two years, but again, just like the last gentleman that spoke, we understood that in our area, there was going to be a new school based upon the amount of growth that's projected in our area and the need for better education for our children. So, again, I want to, I just want to start with voicing our concerns over just the lack of action by the Board to set a date for at least a public hearing. I think if we, if we got to that point where we brought the citizens together and just heard what everybody really had to say, we might learn something about the situation that we need your attention on. So we're going to leave it at that tonight, but I think we're going to have a lot more for you in the coming weeks and months. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, anyone?
My name is Susannah Griesiak, and I am a resident of Snowden Bridge in the Stonewall District. Not only that, but I am also a graduate of Shorando High School. I am so proud to live in Frederick County again. I moved away for college and was lucky enough to come back, and I want my daughters to have that same experience. I want them to have good schools, and I want them to remember their high school fondly, not being pushed in the hallways, nothing like that. I don't want them to be able to come back here, so please raise my taxes and build those schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Next? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Allison Behan with the Stonewall District and a Snowden Bridge resident, and I just wanted to make it known that I would gladly appreciate you raising my taxes, and I am in support of the capital improvement plan. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Emma Phillips, and I am a student at the Stonewall Elementary School. I'm here to talk to you about the reasons why you should help fund for a new school in the county, to help lower the overcrowding in schools. Sometimes during gym class, it is hard to run laps. That's because there are many children in my class. I have to push past just to reach the other side of the gym. Another reason is that while watching assemblies, there are many children at my school, so it gets very warm very quickly. Also, there are quite a few people in Stonewall, so there's a long wait for the nurse, so I don't get what I need very fast. Sometimes, when there are events after school, some parents have to park on Route 11. This makes me nervous because I'm afraid somebody will get hit by a car. Another reason is that, is there are many people in my class, and I find it hard to concentrate in class. Worst of all, there is a bathroom across from the cafeteria that only has one working toilet, so there is a long wait to use it. I hope you consider this argument, and thank you for your time.
Well spoken. Thank you. Next? Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is John Burge. I'm a resident of the Shawnee District, and I'd like to speak tonight regarding the school Board's capital improvement plan, specifically their request for funds to build a fourth high school. I have one child who attends Evendale Elementary, and I'll have a second beginning there next year. I'm a residential architect who operates a small business here in the county. My wife is a teacher, currently working at Shorando High School, and in the past, served the community at Millbrook High School. I didn't attend the last meeting, but I've refused, reviewed all the comments by the citizens through the county's website. It's apparent to me that everyone here cares about the education of the children in this county and wants them to maintain the high educational standards that make this county a desirable place to live. There are some citizens that are apparently worried about the amount of growth happening here, and if any of you share that sentiment, I would suggest that the only alternative to growth is decline, and I don't think any of us want that. How we smartly manage this growth is another conversation entirely, so I won't dwell on that right now. Growth is happening, and the school board has provided you with some statistics and projections that I think, given the track record of the school board's accuracy, we should all accept. If you don't accept them, I hope you'll accept all the anecdotal evidence presented to you by numerous educators and students who have spoken previous to me. As a residential architect in this area and as a spouse of a county teacher who sees the overcrowded hallways every day, I can similarly attest to that growth. More evidence of that growth is apparent by simply driving up to the expanding developments at Snowden Bridge and Redbonde Run, and if you continue to stall on the decision to build a new high school, those developers may need to amend their advertisements to read, "Beautiful homes, starting in the low 300s, public education not included." That would probably remove the problem of growth from the table pretty quickly. While you all may recognize that growth is happening, it has been happening for the last decade, the proposed school has been part of the CIP. Some of you think that it can be dealt with by providing more trailers or adding on to schools we already have. I will echo the numerous arguments against those decisions that have already been made. The safety risk has come with trailers, the failure of those Band-Aids to bring with them, the additional spaces needed for lunch services, parking, teacher planning, et cetera, and the proven drawbacks of increased class sizes. To this argument, I'd like to add a little anecdote from my days in architecture school. One day, one of my most respected professors addressed us as a class and told us that we weren't being lazy enough. That got our attention. Then he went on to clarify that we just weren't being lazy in the right way, and to make a distinction between long-term laziness and short-term laziness. All laziness is an attempt to avoid or minimize some task before us. Short-term laziness provides people... Short-term laziness provides people, short-term laziness people, the effort to avoid effort at the moment that it is required. Long-term laziness is really just a desire for efficiency and a desire to minimize the overall amount of work needed to complete a task. People who are long-term lazy have the ability to see the starting point, the finishing point, and then determine the pathway between those two things that will ultimately cost them the least in effort, time, or money. Some of you have concerns about the cost of the project and rightly so. It's a big project. Are there things that can be done to reduce the costs? Yes, I'm sure there are and I understand the school board is funding an inquiry into that question. But I would suggest to you that the efforts of the school board and the architectural team to design without a budget, in the dark as it were, are hamstringing their attempts to reach some middle ground. Never in my nearly 20 years as an architect have I been asked to design anything without being provided at the very beginning of the process, some explicit budget to work with. This board ostensibly has a better understanding of the county's budget than anyone. This board's also been presented with a clear picture and hard numbers of the county's current and projected overcrowding problems. How this board has managed to make it nearly 10 years with this information at hand and still fail to provide the school board with a specific budgetary number to work with for this new school is beyond me. I also understand there's an effort by this board to insert yourselves more formally into the design process and gain a little more control over what is being built and not simply how much it costs. While I understand and even share some of your concerns about the design elements, I believe we should leave the matter up to the school board and the architectural design team. I don't want elected officials telling me how to build my house and I similarly don't want them telling our education experts how to build our children's schools. Give them some budgetary limitations and then let them use that parameter to solve the problem the best way they know how. Finally, I would suggest that any belief that this project can be put off further by using alternate means to address the current and worsening overcrowding problems is an act of short-term laziness. A new school will have to be built eventually. That is the undeniable endpoint. Any money that is spent on short-term fixes is money that's being tossed away while we watch the cost for that eventual school continue to rise. It's not going to be cheaper to build a new school in five years, but it will be just as necessary, if not more so. So to address your concerns about the cost, without delving into hard numbers, I would simply suggest to you that the option that is truly fiscally conservative is to take the long view and tackle this problem now without wasting money on temporary facilities and waiting for other costs to rise. Nobody wants to pay more taxes and I'm sure the fact that this is an election year for some of you makes that proposal even more unpalatable. But what should really be undesirable to you in an election year, or any year for that matter, is the prospect of discarding so many children's tomorrows in an effort to save a dollar today. Quality education for our children is priceless and I, for one, am willing to shoulder my part of the burden to make sure they get it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Are there others? Yes, ma'am?
Hello, Carrie Anne Kite again.
Ma'am?
Sorry.
Everyone will have an opportunity to speak first before anyone has an opportunity to speak a second time.
But we will come back to you. Okay. It's not, I'm not speaking on the same thing. I was actually going to speak-
Doesn't matter what the subject is. We will come back to you then. Yes, sir?
Hello supervisors, my name is Brian Pecoraro. I'm from the Stonewall District. You're hearing a lot of things about education and academics. So you know I'm also a public educator in Loudoun County. I'm the guidance counselor in one of the elementary schools over there. I think what we're not taking into account besides academics is mental health. We're not looking at students with special needs and we're talking about redistricting and rezoning, excuse me, and busing students to schools that are nearly overcrowded already. What we have to start looking at too is thinking about our special needs students, our students with mental illness, students who are not necessarily have IEPs yet, but students who are currently being looked at and why moving there would be kind of a problem. Thank you for your time. I do support the CIP.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, Board. My name is Brittany Cummings. I am from the Stonewall District and I just wanted to let you all know that I am in full support of the capital improvement plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Meeks and I live in the Snowden Bridge Development and part of the Stonewall School District. I am also in full support of the capital improvement plan. My family moved here because of the schools. I'm a former Frederick County teacher and so I knew firsthand the quality of the schools. However, we have a four-year-old and a two-year-old and my four-year-old's almost five and we actually made the decision to send her to preschool again because the classroom sizes are 25-plus and I don't feel that a five-year-old is going to learn what she needs in kindergarten with that many students and one teacher and possibly an aide. The other thing that I do want to mention is while this raises taxes, other people are looking at Frederick County to move to based on the quality of the schools. The quality of school goes, goes down as their enrollment goes up. So, the, our houses and the quality of Frederick County goes up as we get better schools and better grades on our schools when you go and look for housing. And so, I would just like to say that I am also in full support of the capital improvement plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. My name's Carrie Redkay and I'm a teacher pursuing a degree in administration. So right now, I'm taking a school finance and budget class. I'd like to thank you very much for taking the time to hear my words and I'd like to ask you to consider my questions. I recently had the wonderful opportunity to interview with J.D. Price, the architect of this school. It was an amazing opportunity and during that time, I had the opportunity to review the Eastern Frederick County Road Plan from the Frederick County Comprehensive Plan. The plan shows Justice Drive as an artery connecting 522 to Airport Road. It's a large four-lane road. The cost of that is being rolled into the new high school and it seems like the road is excessive for the size of the school. Perhaps, if this is an artery road, the expense could be shared with the county? Thank you for your consideration with that and please consider moving forward with this fourth high school.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes?
Hi, my name's Brandy Hammond from the Shawnee District. Glad to be here with you again this evening. I'll, I'll keep it short. Mainly, I want to say please raise my taxes if it means our children can, can be relieved of the currently overcrowded conditions that many have been in for several years. So please raise my taxes. I'm happy to pay them. And I'd like to say, you know, I'm, I'm here not only as a parent of, of, of a daughter in high school and a daughter in 5th grade, hoping to, to not have to enter a crowded high school in four years, but also as a citizen. Since I saw you last, I've spent lots of time doing the research. I'm in full support of all the design elements. Now, something I initially questioned as well, okay? And, and I'd be happy to sit down with any of you and explain what I've learned, what I've seen. I've also visited schools this week like Frederick County Middle School, Stonewall Elementary School, which have nothing to do with my children because as a citizen of this community, I want what's best for all our children. And seeing what could be in places like Frederick County Middle School as opposed to what is at Stonewall Elementary, there's, there's a lot we need to do for these overcrowded schools. So, please, please move forward. No further delays. I understand the finances to a point, but if it's a matter of a courthouse that's not exactly needed or a, a place for our children to learn adequately, it needs to be moved now. And there, it sounds like there were past mistakes possibly with this board or your predecessors. This is not, not new information. It's been known for years. And yes, I know some people have said, "Well, if I was on this board five years ago, I would have planned for it then." And, and you weren't. You can't fix it, but we have to face what's now. Nobody, it sounds like nobody was adequately planning the funding for this five years ago when it was needed. We need it now, so go into debt, raise my taxes, but no further delays, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ma'am, thank you. Appreciate your patience.
Again, I'm Carrie Anne Kite in the Shawnee District. I want to talk a little bit about the taxes. We purchased our four-bedroom, 1625 square feet house in 2008 and my taxes at the time were 1125. From 2009 to 2011, my taxes went down to 973. 2012, 970. 2013 to 2014, 952. 2015, 954. 2016, 1120. So from the time I purchased my house until this year, I've pretty much had a break on my taxes every year. And I understand that, that that jump from 2015 to 2016 was significant with the reassessment as well as a tax increase. But I am still below what I paid when I purchased my house in 2008. Now, we've known for a long time that these schools were on the budget. Now, instead of trying to sock away some money for some of this future need, the board, maybe not you, I'm not sure who was on the board at the time, would choose to stay revenue neutral instead of raising the taxes to try to put some of this money away for these projects. So I'd say, please raise my taxes because honestly, it's, it's needed. The other thing I wanted to address was the actual construction costs. At the last meeting supervisor Dunn, you quoted an average cost of $50 million for a high school in 2014. I did some research and I found a report titled, "The State of School Construction." It was written by Paul Abramson, a school construction cost expert. There's a chart that speaks of median school construction. It actually refers to that 500 million statistic. And it also refers to the median school size, which was 900. So which, that's much smaller than our proposed, our proposed fourth high school. The chart also states that the median cost per student was $51,277,000. If we calculate that cost to factor in the new high school capacity of 1725, we get a cost of 88.4 million for a school based on his projections from 2015. If you factor in a projected construction cost increase of 1.4 million a year, which was provided by the Frederick County School Board, that would bring the estimate for a 2014 school to be 91.2 million. It also references cost per square foot at $266.67. The most recent construction of Frederick County Middle School, built during the same timeframe of this study, came in at 233 per square foot, which is below, well below this figure. Another report called, "The Annual School Construction Report 2015," breaks down school costs per region. Our region consists of West Virginia, Virginia, DC, Maryland, and Delaware. In this breakdown, the cost per student for high school is actually more. It was 63,333, which would bring estimates for a capacity of 1725 school to be over 109 million based on the 215 numbers. It also references the median cost of elementary school was 36.9 million with a capacity of 629. When looking at the statistics from a construction expert, our construction estimates are not high, but fall within the median. If figures are going to be provided, they need to refer to schools in similar regions and of similar capacity and function. The figures need to take into account the cost of athletic facilities and the extensive spaces that cater to career and technical education, which will allow for our students to get employment right out of high school. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone? Yes, ma'am?
My name is Jennifer Williams. I am with the Shawnee District. I am here obviously in support, just as I was the last time, for the CIP plan. I am to ask all of you, Board of Supervisors and Mr. Chairman, to encourage the public to go out and visit and research these schools. I have done so myself this past week with another parent and a friend of mine. We went to Frederick County Middle School to see for ourselves the building and the energy that they are saving out there. There is not a heating bill. There is not a water bill that the Frederick County School System is receiving and part of the geothermal that will be in place because it is all recycled. The construction and structure of that building alone is absolutely amazing and what they have provided and done and the sense of pride and joy through that school is unremarkable, especially from where they came from. To the person who said about the safety, I ask you to go to the school and educate yourself. Walking through that building itself and centrally located are the housing departments of each grade. Every door is locked. You cannot see a student if anything is locked down. I have seen it myself. Also, as a substitute teacher and part of the education system, that building itself provides perfect safety for teaching elements of a teacher and the students as well as our special needs students. The structure, the furniture, and everything provided inside of that is in sound in mind of everyone indeed. We went from there. Because of the class that is there with the glass, I can tell you that I am very thrilled to see that, that you can see your students in the common area as well as your students in the classroom. We got to see the kids change classrooms. We got to see the kids use the common area to be able to study and take tests as a teacher was able to see her students and her classroom. With a speaker that they use to be able to speak to the students, it is sound in mind, perfect. And we, with the plan in mind for the new high school, need to do that as well, as well as Stonewall. Visited Stonewall. I have to tell you, I am, as a mother, my heart breaks for this family out here because my daughter and my children do not go to Stonewall District. They go to Armel. But to walk and see those students and hear the students this evening and hear the parents and see for myself and with another, it's deplorable. It's depressing. I can't imagine anybody would want to move to Frederick County and especially north of town and put their child in that school system. I certainly wouldn't. Then we went on to Shurando High School and asked to see everything, the crowding, what it looks like when the kids are moving around. Mind you, that was Monday when it was snowing and sleeting outside. As we sat in the cafeteria watching every child trying to play a ping-pong game of which way they're going to go and how they're going to sit while 120 students are coming through the side building out from the eight trailers outside of the doors in those elements trying to get back inside. We are completely overcapacitated with 1,500 students at Shurando, 1,400 at Millbrook. Frederick County Middle was built to hold 900 students, currently holds 700. It was built to hold the future. The new high school in mind is built with 1,725 students in mind. If we do not keep that structure of sound and build for our future, we will be like Shurando was 20 years ago and having to add on a wing two years later because we were already at capacity. There is not a time to delay. I am asking you, please do not delay this any more than it already has been. Again, we are five years behind. We do not need to be behind anymore. And again, I ask you, sitting on that side, to allow these people to be educated, go and visit the school system. I also, at this moment, would like to ask anybody here that is in support of the CIP to please stand. I thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to speak? Anyone? Yes, sir?
My name's Dana Newcomb from Gainesboro District. And first, I'd like to commend Mr. Janney for his article in the newspaper today. It obviously ripped the bandage off the wound. The, the unfortunate problem that you have before you, as does the school board, is that your responsibility is to represent all the citizens of this county. And obviously, we have, with regard to the issue of debt and taxes and that sort of thing, a, a problem that doesn't lend itself to the format that you normally have in these meetings where you're limited to a, a three-minute presentation without any kind of response or give and take. What is needed here is a dialogue among the constituents of this county. And what I would like to recommend is that each of the supervisors here, that you adopt whatever motion or whatever is necessary so that each of you as supervisors, in conjunction with your school board counterpart, go out to your respective districts and hold meetings with your constituents and find out what the sense of the county is. with your constituents and find out what the sense of the county is. Clearly, we can all empathize with parents who are interested in having the best education for their students. We all want that. You also have to empathize with the students, or I'm sorry, with the constituents in this county that can't afford a 40% tax increase. And that has to be balanced out and possibly come up with alternative solutions that can accommodate not only the needs of the students, but also what the constituents in this county can afford. If it's not affordable, it's not affordable. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Jennifer Myers. I'm in the Stonewall District. I did speak back in December for when it became, when it was on the agenda. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but some of the individuals speak tonight, and they say that they want you to be the board for all constituents. Interestingly enough, a lot of those people are, are in the older sector of our community, and most likely, they probably had kids that went through this school district. They got what they needed. I actually grew up here. I got what I needed, and now I'm watching my children not get what they need. And unfortunately, the gentlemen are mostly from Gainesboro. They have what they need. They have a brand-new elementary. They have a brand-new middle, and James Wood is not overcrowded. That's why they're not concerned about it. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone at all? Last call? All right, well, we certainly thank you coming, sharing your views with us. It is helpful, and it is important, and we appreciate it. Thank you. For the supervisor's comments, Mr. Dunn.
First of all, Mr. Chairman, sorry for interrupting the-
It's okay.
-previous situation. So, there've been a number of comments here, you know, this evening, and the gentleman made the comment about impact fees. There were good comments. I mean, I think that we, as a community, have to kind of pull together on that, and I don't have an instant answer today. We're trying to work through that, you know, in the coming weeks. I made some comments last week on, on high schools. I wasn't expect, or two weeks ago, I wasn't expecting the comments from here, and I'm looking to work, forward to working with Dr. Spine and Dr. Lamanna to find a solution to a group problem. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments? Board comments? Anyone? No? Okay. Please, Chairman Fisher.
Move for adjournment, Mr. Chairman.
Adjournance, is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussions? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those no, we'll stand adjourned. Thank you all for coming out and participating. It is helpful.